United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight with athletes for our students.
Yes, this evening, we have a live number. In fourteen and a half years that I've been on this voyage, I cannot remember how I had five pages of adoration. So what's gonna happen, I'd like you to hold back your applause so that we can get through it, because we have so many. And so we're gonna start off with gymnastics. Congratulations to the following members of the Mahalo High School gymnastics team for winning the Division One State Championship. And to those gym, the two also placed individually at the states, the New England Regionals, and senior nationals. Start off with Morgan Adams. Tatum Costa. Emily Donato. Katie Delaro. Marissa Brandier. Jamie Foreman. Okay, Armani Jackson here. Armani grew up next to my home, so she was a neighbor. And then she gets sick and tired of us and boom. I don't know if you noticed about Armani, her dad, Michael Jackson, is a big deal. He is a recruiter, a national recruiter for the province, province fighters. And so, obviously, she grew up being an athlete. Megan Howard. Kaylin Quinn. Molly Cibergo. Kelsey R. Olson. Reese Pavel. Nora Prendega. Brooke Romalia. Grace Silver. Maria Tucker Tongue. She's really not here. Elizabeth Waxer. Morgan Walsh. Nicole Daniele is the head coach.
I want to thank everybody for acknowledging our championship and celebrating these young ladies. It was an amazing year, and my seniors have never lost. Undefeated for four years in a row. Now, they are truly amazing, and not only are they fantastic athletes, but they are really good human beings. They're kind, they're caring, very supportive of each other. Every practice, every meet, they encourage each other to the goal. So I'm so proud of all of you. Thank you.
Now, is Courtney here? Is Courtney here? Is Courtney here? She's the assistant.
Look at Dr. D.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going into boys' basketball. Congratulations to the Mahalo Boys Basketball Team for winning the Rhode Island Interscholastic League's Division Three League Championship and Division Three State Championship. And for those who also placed individually. First of all, Xavier Costa. Xavier happens to have two. One is from the school committee citation for the boys' basketball team, and also one for being selected to the Rhode Island Basketball Coaches Association Second Team All League. Cameron Santieri. Cameron also has two. First of all, the boys' basketball division for winning Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division, and also for being selected to the Basketball Coaches Association Second Team. Congratulations. Joshua Sow. Derek Fazi. Mitchell Higgins. Darius Costa. Darius also has two. The first, Division Three League Championship, and also being selected to the Second Team All League. Ryan Sisley. Jayden Kopeci. Jayden has both of those awards stuffs. Congratulations, Jayden. Ovi Emranti. Mason Albi. Grayne Cibergo. Sean Bento. Jayden Simba. Liam Texner. Nathan Mulatt. Zoe Moe. Zoe? Is Coach Jeffrey here?
I'll keep this short. I can't explain how, for me, to be able to come back to the school that I grew up playing for, to be able to come and mentor some of these kids, it was, it was a pleasure. I really enjoyed the whole ride, I know they did. It was a lot of fun. We had our ups and downs, as any team does, but for the most part, these kids played so hard. It was so much fun to watch them play, and I know a lot of you guys came to a lot of the games, and I hope you enjoyed it. I am so proud of my seniors. I want to wish them luck on their next endeavor. Good luck to you guys. And hey, we got next year to defend, defend our championship. So we'll look forward, that's something we gotta look forward to. So, thank you.
Okay, next is Mahalo High School Girls Basketball. Is Zoe here? What? Zoe Monier. Jiggy Handley. Eva Lombardo. Mia Harris. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations. Next is Boys Ice Hockey. Congratulations to the following Mahalo High School Boys Ice Hockey Team members for the following achievements. Cameron Rainford, Cameron here? Not here? Is Jiggy Handley here? Okay, we're gonna go to Girls Ice Hockey now. Congratulations to the Girls Ice Hockey Team for achieving state runner-up and winning the Team Sportsmanship Award. And looking for those who placed individually. Ellie Kopeci. Ellie also being selected, Tonge Joe First Team Allstate Gold. Bella Handley. Madison Cornell. I want to give Madison a welcome. And the Girls Ice Hockey, Ice Hockey Team for achieving state runner-up and winning this Team Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations. Also, Madison will be selected to the Girls Ice Hockey EMMA All Division Third Team. Catherine Baker Barker. Catherine also for being selected to Tonge Joe First Team Allstate Gold, and for being selected to the RIGHCA Allstate First Team Girls Ice Hockey. Grace Stevens. Grace here? Christine Krzynowski. Christine's not here? Must be my aptitude. Corey Brufter? Okay, Corey is the Mahalo High School Wrestling. Corey here? Nicholas Gomes. Okay, Bennett. Congratulations. Now, we're gonna go to KMS Wrestling. Congratulations to the following KMS Wrestling Team members for the following achievements at the RIBCOA State Wrestling Championship. Brock Gudjico? Ashley Corley? James Sturino? Louis Gudjico? Mason Vettaro? Next is Mahalo High School. Next, Mahalo High School Tracking Field. Congratulations to the following Mahalo High School Indoor Tracking Field members for the following achievements. Megan Howard? Andrea Hayden? Andrew O'Malley? Emily Donato? Kylie Bushard? Gabrielle Masoli? Well, congratulations. Anyone pictures? Next, we see Courage, One Water, Robotic Tournament. Samuel Rogers? Avery Peters? Gabrielle Dela? Christopher Martin? Josephine Wana? Anna Parker Lyle? Otto Calvert? Evan Daniel? Vivian Baril? Grayne Connor? Grayden Connor. Madison Rogers. For being awarded the General Treasurer Seth Magaziner's Young Leader Award at the Decker International Career Development Conference for being awarded Confidence in the Learn and Earn Event. Widen Sarah? Widen Sarah? Yes, Abigail Lindo also on Team Team at Four Place. Yeah, could we get the whole Sea Purge group over here? We want to take a picture with everyone. Her certificate was missing, I apologize. This is several. Several of these. Julie Kenny. Sophia Bonaventa. Sophia here. Maya D'Amlo. Sierra Maturi. Julian Parker. Jootiska. Warren Sherr. Julia Sousa. Sophia Neath. Samuel Mary. Joshua Moore. And Taylor McGee. We can have your pin too please, just a moment.
I just want to say that there were some letters that went out to also celebrate the students who got the Changemakers Award at the State House for their Generation Citizen project. However, the Secretary did not receive the names of all the students in time, so I'm sorry to say that we do not have those citations tonight, but we will have them at the June 10th Workshop Meeting. I apologize to my daughter, who had to come to this meeting for no reason, but we will have you all back hopefully on June 10th to celebrate that, and my apologies again. But congratulations to those students as well for Donald. So now we will move on to public comments. The first is a group of students, I'll name them and I think they would like to come up as a group to speak. I've got Edidi Metta, Galen Ricks, Julie LeBrolle, Sophia Farrelto, Sophie Chimental, and Emily Moreno.
Hi, we're students from Mount Hope and recently we've been hearing a lot, we've been talking a lot about the budget cuts that are going to be happening and we've learned how they're going to affect us and we are not happy about it, so that's why we are coming back.
Okay, so kind of to begin with, one of the biggest problems that I think everyone's been faced with is the setup of the schedule itself. Like, so we understand that we're dropping from eight periods a day to seven periods, but on top of that, we no longer have the option to take certain electives because the way the schedule's set up is where some of our core curriculum classes like math, science, history, English, they are non-movable because some of them only have one class a day. So for my case, I have a chemistry period at the same time as I would like to take a music theory class, but I can't take that because I can't move my chemistry class to any other period because of other classes that can't be moved. And that's a very similar situation to almost everyone that I've talked about to the most part, and everyone kind of has more specific issues or bad, but I think that's the biggest problem faced by everyone.
I am Emily Moreno and this is Sophia Farrelto. We kind of represent the performing arts aspect of this. Again, with the classes, we have tried to move our schedules, both of us have tried to move our schedules around so that we can fit in more performing arts pathway classes because that's both the pathway we want to take. Since we tried to move classes around and if that were the case, we would be able to do it, but the fact since we don't have eight classes anymore and we are required to take a gym class this year and every year, that prohibits us from taking an elective that we would like to take. So I know like other pathways, including engineering and like science and all those things, none of us can take the electives we want to take because we have to take required classes and there's no room, there's no wiggle room for any of it.
Another issue with that too is I know that I heard, yeah, so we're both in mostly honors classes with some AP and stuff in there too, and a big issue with that is those classes, there is only one of them, so you can't move it around and we don't have that flexibility, and that's the main issue that we're having because we would have to switch into classes that are a lower level in order to be able to take that class and take the one that we wanted to, and so that would mean that we either have to choose between doing something we really want to do, kind of really interested in, or making school easier for us and ultimately not getting out of it what we should be getting.
Hi, I'm Julia LeBrolle. I have the same problems as all of them, and also if we switched to the schedule, we would have more classes a day and less time in those classes, which would mean more homework and less time to do it. And as a kid who's in all honors and AP classes, that's really stressful, and I know that a ton of students are freaking out about that because we don't know how we're going to be able to do it, and I'm also upset about the classes that we can't move because I don't want to move down to a level that's not challenging enough, but there are classes that I want to take that I can't take because of that.
After-school activities are such a big part of my life, and I know Kristy Delisle is such a huge person of this. I know school is extremely important, I agree with all the issues there, but without Kristy, I don't know where I'm going to be. I know I'm a three, four athlete, I want to continue this, and without her being here full-time, that leaves us like with nothing. She does buses, uniforms, and she does everything we would want for, and I really don't know where we'd end up without her. I personally know her personally, and she's such a great person to have at this school, and I want to continue to have her full-time.
My name's Edidi Metta. At the beginning of the school year, I wasn't sure if I was coming to Mount Hope. My parents wanted to send me to a private school, but I ended up coming here because of the opportunities that I was being given. If those opportunities are taken away from me now, I might not be able to stay at this school, and I want to with all my bent in here. I don't want to have to restart somewhere else to get the opportunities that I deserve. Another thing is that going down to seven classes, when I first heard about it, I was upset, but I wasn't that upset because I knew that we had this thing called Virtual High School where you could take classes online, and so going down to seven classes, yes, you have seven classes here, but you could take your seventh class online. I recently learned that our license for that hasn't been renewed, and so we're cutting down on classes, but we're not being given the opportunity to make up those classes, which as you can tell, it's not really working well with the students. We want to be given opportunities that we deserve. And when some of our parents talked this up with administrators and our people that have the power to change it, they said that if students compromise with eight classes, they cannot compromise with seven, and we don't want our education to be compromised. We want to be able to get what we deserve to get, and that is your job as our school committee and as our superintendent. You're supposed to give us opportunities that we need to be successful in life, and I don't think that's. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's why I'm quitting. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Allison Lewis. Good evening, School Committee Members and Bristol Warren Community Members. My name is Allison Lewis, and I have had the pleasure of teaching at Mount Hope High School for the past five years. My responsibilities include ninth grade health and physical education teacher, PAS, Personalized Academic Student Success Program Teacher, Academic Support Program Coordinator, VASSA, Varsity Athletes Against Substance Abuse Advisor, and most recently NEAS Tri-Chair. I enjoy fulfilling the wide range of teacher roles, whether it be instilling health and wellness values in the classroom or gymnasium, working one-on-one with at-risk students to implement academic and or personal goal-setting, and supporting student athletes with academic improvement. Tonight, I am here to advocate for a very important position at Mount Hope High School for which Superintendent Andre is recommending full invasion. The position of PAS Program Teacher is the position I currently hold, which in turn will also terminate my employment at Mount Hope High School. Yes, I would love to remain gainfully employed in the Bristol Warren Regional School District. However, I am here to advocate foremost for the students of Mount Hope High School whom benefit from the services of this position. The at-risk population at Mount Hope High School are students in need of academic, social, and emotional, and are graduation support interventions. These are students who show early warning signs of disengagement and are at risk of dropping out of school. Check and Connect is a dropout prevention program that has been found to be an intervention to have positive effects of staying in school. As PAS Program Teacher, the process of check and connect allows me to advocate for and challenge my students to maintain a primary focus on staying in school. At our weekly meetings... meetings, I am able to provide students with the following supports: connecting with students in the past program, connecting students to support such as school counselors, school psychologists, social worker, student assistance counselor, past teachers, administration, and community support such as East Bay Community Action Program; personalizing each student's academic and social and emotional strengths and unique needs, as well as setting short-term and long-term goals; supporting students to develop action plans to reach their goals; monitoring individual student progress in achieving their goals; tracking overall student progress to evaluate the program effectiveness; and teaching students essential skills toward independence, including time management, organization, self-advocacy, and skills for developing accountability and strategies that they can implement long-term in assessing their academic and personal lives. Additional teacher responsibilities include reporting progress regularly to administration citing strengths and challenges, which include creation and implementation of interventions. One of the main responsibilities of the past program teacher is to work with students to set and monitor short-term and long-term personal and academic goals. In particular, the past program teacher plays an instrumental part in helping students achieve the long-term goal of graduating from high school. The data I am about to present shows the positive impact and effectiveness of the position of past program teacher in aiding past students toward achieving the goal of graduation. At this point, I ask that the school committee members refer to the data that was just passed around, please. At the beginning of the 2017-18 school year, PASS program was enrolled, and there is a specific cohort classified as school-to-career group. This group started as juniors in the 2017-18 school year. The program was built, in particular, in particular, this cohort, to be given the opportunity for students to be able to recover credits, and they can do so through Mount Hope courses as well as employment in the Bristol Warren community. Eleven students started last year with an average of two to nine credits as juniors, and you need to have 23 in order to graduate. The average work-based credits they earned were between one and two and a half hours. The average credits through Mount Hope courses were 12 through 21, and the percentage of students on track to graduate this year is at 91%. Of these 11 students enrolled in the program, 10 will graduate in particular, and one has the opportunity to graduate in August. Now, in addition to the cohort that started their junior year, there are eight additional seniors who started this year and are on track to finish the program and graduate. Seven out of eight in particular averaging 88% toward the graduation rate for this cohort. So in summary, 89%, 17 of 19 students in school-to-career program as seniors are projected to graduate on June 8, 2019. At this time, I ask that you reflect on the goal of providing all of our Mount Hope students with the knowledge and skills necessary for college and career readiness. The data I have presented clearly shows that the role of past program teacher is vital in providing at-risk students at Mount Hope with additional support to stay in school and achieve the goal of graduation. As past program teacher, my goal is consistently to go above and beyond for all students in past program by providing them with the necessary skills and supports in order for them to achieve personal and academic success. Past students will also agree that the position of past program teacher is pertinent in their ability to achieve their goals, especially the goal of graduation. In closing, I believe it would be a disservice to our students to eliminate the position of past program teacher. The superintendent's recommendation of non-renewal of past program teacher is based on funding and the need to eliminate positions to meet the needs of students. If the Bristol Warren Regional School District places a strong emphasis on meeting the needs of the whole child, then eliminating the position of past program teacher would contradict this belief. With that, I strongly ask that you reconsider the elimination of this position, the position that I currently hold, and be given the opportunity to continue providing at-risk students at Mount Hope with quality, social, emotional, and academic support. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mr. TJ Delcento.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm TJ Delcento. I'm the department chair of Physical Education and Health here at Mount Hope High School. I've been a physical education teacher for 30 years in our district, and I'm here tonight as a member of our district's Wellness Committee to read an open letter to the Bristol Warren Regional School District School Committee. Whereas, this is, there is a long-established, well-documented, and widely accepted link between the physical, emotional, and wellness of students and academic achievement. And whereas, a report to the President of the United States from the Secretary of Health and Human Services and the Secretary of Education states, quote, "Physical inactivity has contributed to an unprecedented epidemic of childhood obesity, and enhancing efforts to promote participation in physical education, activity, and sports among young people is a critical national priority." And whereas, the Every Student Succeeds Act identified school physical education and health as part of a student's well-rounded education for the first time in federal education law. And whereas, nine out of 10 students report developing beneficial skills through their physical education and health class experience that they use outside of physical education and health, including problem-solving skills, goal-setting skills, stress-management skills, focusing skills, developing self-confidence, learning how to work with others, and developing responsible personal social behavior. And as, it has clearly been established over the past school year that meeting the social, emotional, and health needs of our students has to be a priority for our district. And whereas, we are committed to empowering our students to lead healthy and active lives through effective, comprehensive physical education and health programs, we, the Bristol Warren Regional School District's Wellness Committee hereby petition the Bristol Warren Regional School District School Committee to direct the school district to comply with Rhode Island State Law 16-22-4 and provide all students in our district with the mandated number of 100 minutes of physical education and health per week. Provide adequate staffing to ensure the integrity and effectiveness of physical education and health programs at all schools in our district. Appoint a district-wide department chair in physical education and health to provide curricular oversight, consistency, and communication, especially in light of the ongoing revision of the district's K-12 health curriculum that will be adopted by our district in the 2019-2020 school year. Appoint a district-wide adapted physical education teacher to provide oversight, consistency, and communication, and to ensure that any student in our district who requires adaptive physical education services receives those services. And to foster and support a culture across our district that values physical education, health, and wellness by providing more opportunities for our students to engage in physical education, health, and wellness experiences, by encouraging training teachers to provide movement rates to their students after 50 minutes of focused instruction, and by exploring alternative ways of helping to meet our students' physical, mental, and emotional needs. Further, we petition the school committee to legitimize and validate the Wellness Committee by designating the Wellness Committee as an officially-recognized subcommittee of the Bristol Warren Regional School District School Committee. At a time when our students are confronted with burning, mental health issues, opioid epidemic, and countless other physical, emotional, wellness-related issues, we believe the Wellness Committee can and should be a vehicle for cultural change in our district. We believe these ideas are aligned with the school district's missions and goals, and we believe if we prioritize this, not only will we improve test scores, but we will see decreases in behavioral disturbances by teaching students life skills for coping with and navigating obstacles which will arise in their paths, leading to more resilient student body, and ultimately, younger adults better prepared to succeed in our current society. This letter is signed by members of the committee, Colleen Grish, co-chair, Adam Rainbow, co-chair, Kimberly McCormick, school nurse at Rockwell, Emily Spence, heads coordinator, Tracy Earl, physical education and health teacher, Andrew Score, physical education and health teacher, Tracy Lima, physical education and health teacher, Michaela Kelton, physical education and health teacher, Corinne Leatherall, co-director of Healthy Schools, R.I., Patricia Prissette, Cozy, program director, and myself. Thank you for your consideration.
If you'd like to leave a copy of that with our secretary?
She has it, let's talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Next is Donna Larson.
Good evening. My name is Donna Larson, and hope my children graduate from Mount Hope. I can speak from personal experience to the fact that Kristi Goula sat on my children. Kristi spent time not only working the nuts and bolts of the athletic program, but was a personal touch that kept my son on the path to graduate. It was instrumental in helping my daughter fulfill her dream of playing college soccer. Kristi doesn't just schedule buses. She holds and touches the students and their lives. She runs a program that keeps children and students engaged in school. We just celebrated several student athletes. In order to grow and to ensure the continued success, you need to have an athletic director who is here full-time. Thank you.
We'll have Steve Kalenda.
Good evening, council people, council, sorry about that, cheers. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Steve Kalenda, and I don't come here as an elected official. I don't come here as somebody who has participated in zoning issues. I just come here as a dad. I have a son that some of you may know that goes to Mount Hope, and he's a 2020 graduate. When it comes down to athletics, of course, I'm very passionate because I've been involved in athletics pretty much my entire teenage and adult life. I've seen children come up and grow up to be successful doctors, lawyers, teachers, that have all been a participant, of coaches that I've helped either mentor them or coach them and directly. The good news is, is when you do see an elected politician come to a podium and they haven't pulled out a prepared speech, I'm going to be quick. So my remarks will be quick, but they're going to be to the point. As far as an athletic director position goes in the Bristol Warren Regional School District, regardless if you love that person or hate that person, you have to remove the face away from the position. The position definitely needs to be a full-time position. I've had many dealings with our present athletic director, and some of them have been very positive, and some of them, we've not always agreed on the same point. But the point being is, that person has been able to be breached, and that is the biggest issue that you have to deal with when funding and thinking about positions. Forget about the fact that that position kays to probably someone of about 700 students. Forget about the fact that there are 27 sports that that position deals with between the varsity, subvarsity, and middle school. One of the things that I am involved in is I am a high school baseball umpire for the state of Rhode Island. I've been involved in that association for two years now, and I travel all over the state in the varsity level and the subvarsity level, and I see athletics all over the state of Rhode Island. Keep in mind, with the new regulations that are mandated by GRIL, at every event that you host, an individual who represents the school needs to be present. So if you're going to think about taking that position and cutting it in half, you have to remember that you still need to be able to mandate and comply with what Rhode Island Public Healthistic puts out. That's all I have. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. Good luck. Godspeed. God bless America. God bless the district of the Bristol Warren Regional School District. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone I missed that signed up for public comments? Thank you all so much for speaking tonight, and we always hear you and take everything that you share with us under consideration when we're making our decisions, and just want you to know that. Thank you. And now, I'm going to be removing Recommendation S2019-40 personnel from the consent agenda, and I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will come back out after the executive session.